Bastian.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Fish.
Houseman.
Parsons.
Wakefield.
Well, I guess you would, yeah. Okay. Moving on, we've got a quorum. Approval of the agenda, please.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Seven.
A motion by Houseman, second by Wakefield to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Alright. Moving on, we're gonna go to visitors and timed items, and we're going to go to the park board budget to start out with, which is on page... Is that where it's at?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. And we have some representatives here. We have Devin Coughlin, who is our park superintendent, and we have Al Kirkabee, who is our vice president of the park board, and Lee Zerbal, who serves on our park board, here to present the budget.
Page twenty-seven.
And Mindy Hanson. I'm sorry, Mindy. Excuse me. Yeah, yeah, we'll start with the swimming pool, 'cause we want to talk about that splash pad. So, would you mind coming up? And you've got it with you, Al?
Well, I'm updated.
Okay.
And then just give your name and address, please.
Sure. Al Kirkabee, thirteen seventeen Parkview Place. And you wanna talk about the pool first and the splash pad. So, we've had some interest in putting in a splash pad and have prepared an RFP to send out to some firms to get some bids on what it might do. So, we have an item in the budget right now. One is, it's a, it'll be a reserve towards a project, because we know this is going to be an expensive project and probably multi-year, but that budget line item is fifty thousand dollars. Lee, anything that I heard? Or Mindy?
They're just here for support.
So, for that, if we wanted to, if you recall, if we don't give this money in the budget, if you were to lose it, basically, and so to be able to accrue funds, we have to put together a special as an ordinance, right? Resolution?
Resolution, I think. Just establish it in that column.
Okay. So, to, to preserve some money for special projects, we have to create a, did you say resolution? We have to do a special resolution, the council would have to, and then we could put some money from this, well, next year and, and future years together, and it's for a specific project, capo project has to be used in five years. So, the council would have to agree to that. So, we put that money in the budget with the hopes that they would agree to that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Really, that's the only big thing on the pool, right?
Yeah, it is, unless anyone has questions on the other line items, but... We've got one other thing, the splash pad study. It's not gonna be fully completed this year, so we'll have to budget for some of it for next year. Yep.
That's what that is? Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, great. And then, Devin, we needed to replace the boiler and the door, the roll-up doors and some lights.
Yeah. The boiler's getting kinda outdated and inefficient, and it's probably a good life, and it's doing, it ran fine, but it's needing it soon. Same with the doors. The doors are all pretty crappy, and they're hard to lock and open. We're getting very close to having most of the things at the pool relatively newer updated. Another year, two years, and we'll be pretty good.
These are items that, these are...
You know.
So, these are items that you've had quoted, so we're pretty close on these numbers, you think? Or...
Yep.
And then, one of the feedback items on the pool, a couple moms had asked me if we could get some more chairs and that kinda stuff out there, so I don't know if that's something that's on the budget, but...
Uh, they're just a lot of supplies. Chairs aren't too bad. We just get them by the case.
Okay.
They're a cheap version, but they get broke a lot, so haven't, go a lot more expensive to get a nicer chair, but, I don't know, kids jump around out of them, and they snap them, and they're plastics, and you can't fix it.
Fix them, sure. Yeah, it was just one of the things that quite a few people were super excited with how easy it was to get to the pool this year with the new pool pass, and some of the moms had gone and stuff, so they had, you know, been using that pass as well and said, hey, you know, it'd be nice to...
The routine is to get a few chairs every year, just replace the broken ones and add a couple here and there.
Yeah, if we could, that'd be great. They just said that they'd love to sit and enjoy the sun at their pool a little more, so...
Okay.
And then, my notes said that a couple things that we had left to do was the lifeguard room. We wanted to redo that. That was coming up in the budget cycle at some point.
Yeah, probably next year, maybe we'll see. And then, also, all the lockers, the file cabinets, the desks, the flooring's all, I believe, original still, and it's, you know, it gets wet and dry, and wet and dry, and it's all getting pretty shoddy.
And then, painting the outside of the building was also on the list at some point?
Yeah, in the near future.
Okay. So, Devin's done a really nice job trying to get that pool in the best shape that we can. It's, what is it, twenty years old, twenty-five years old?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven years old?
Ninety-one, I think, was the first one.
Wait, twenty-seven years, so...
Ninety-one? Okay. So, twenty-seven years. So, so thanks for doing that, Devin.
So, one thing, since we've got a couple park board members here, Sibley Iowa had a pretty major issue with their pool, and they did a bunch of fundraising and had phenomenal success with that. They got their past lifeguards to be involved, and my wife was a past lifeguard, so, you know, we all kinda got involved and did some stuff there. And when it comes to a splash pad, I don't know if there'd be some potential there to, you know, maybe make it a matching funds or something like that, but I think you'd get some pretty good support from the community to, to help with potential fundraising. So, there might be a model that they did in Sibley, and if you guys have questions on that, please ask, and I can dig into it and find out how Sibley was successful, but like a million-plus dollars, I think they raised just on fundraising, not out of the city budget, so that was a pretty impressive... It'd be fantastic to get, you know, some private citizens that would be willing to step up and partner with us. It'd be great.
The survey that we did this year, I believe a lot of the feedback was in regards to wanting pool improvements, one of the things.
Alright, whoops, sorry. So, page twenty-eight, some of the things that we've got planned for this year. If you look down at the bottom, we have two lists of improvements. List number two, pickleball, which would actually be doing some work at the tennis courts in Aspen Park to make them usable for both tennis and pickleball. We've had a number of citizens come forward and had a big group, a couple meetings back, to see about bringing pickleball to Brandon. The LED lighting item is at McCarty Park, right, Devin? As is the fishing pier work down there. The other items down there, getting a new skid loader, a new pickup, a mower, dump trailer, paint sprayer, and pallet fork. Those are the two items from list number two and list number three. We have a hundred thousand dollars we've put in the budget to go towards the hockey utilities. The Hockey Association has come to us and said that they believe they will be ready to start building an indoor facility in 2019, and as part of the memorandum of understanding that they had with the city, you know, we are to provide the land, which we have now with Peterson property adjacent to Aspen, and also bring in utility service there, which we've estimating will be about a hundred thousand dollars, so that's what that line item is. The rubber resurfacing, one of the things we wanna start doing with playground equipment is putting in the rubber pellets for a base, as opposed to using sand or mulch or anything like that. The pellets last a lot longer, they're much safer, but they're a lot more expensive, and...
It's a hord.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's a hord material. Have you ever been to the schools doing that on most of their stuff?
So, it's no seam, and it's just flat?
Right.
You know, it's pretty nice. That would help us with ADA compliance?
Yeah, yep. Better for ADA, it's actually better cushion material, it's all around better, but it costs all around a lot more, too. But I think we need to start going that way, especially Sunrise, the one we picked. Sunrise has some drainage issues, it's a lot of clay underneath it, so it doesn't drain very well. And it's a smaller one, so the cost isn't, it's high, but it's pretty higher.
And we have to start somewhere. We thought that it'd be good to start with one of the smaller ones. Other questions on page twenty-eight? Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over that. The Stone Ridge Shelter, that's putting up a picnic shelter at Stone Ridge Park, our newest neighborhood park. Is there a way that we could get a copy of list two and three, just to see the itemized list, just for visibility? Should be at the bottom of your page there. Oh, there it is. There's so many numbers on these to watch. Thank you for that. And that rubber surfacing for a hundred thousand, is that just that one park? Boy, they give that stuff away, don't they? Yeah.
It's been more on having the playground equipment itself.
Okay, thank you. But it won't have to be replaced near as often as if we...
Yeah, what was it, a twenty-year life, I believe?
Is it a twenty-year life?
I believe so.
So, what we tried to do was spread the money around a little bit, because we've really emphasized Aspen Park for the last few years, so as you can see, we are going to some of the other parks to try to spend some of the money. Anybody from the park board, do you have any comments for the council? What we do is we go through this, as Mindy knows, we go through this, and then they come back and they try to cut it. So, we gotta hold firm, guys. We gotta hold firm.
Good luck.
We're actually spending less on the capo projects this year than we did last year, or budgeted, which I don't like that.
What kinda renovations for Pioneer Park? Yeah, fifty thousand?
We took that out. You need to look at the new budget. Sorry.
Oh, I didn't grab this one.
Yeah, use the new budget, page twenty-eight.
Oh, well, here I marked up this one.
There's just a few corrections.
We wanted to do that, Dana, but we just ran out of money.
Sorry about that. We had to come up with a substantial number for the utilities, the expected expense on that. Yep. So, the new hockey number is a hundred thousand, it's fifty of that, and then we made some other, we took some other cuts out of here to...
Questions on the equipment. Devin's been, he's like Raleigh, he makes that equipment last forever, but there does come a day where we do have to replace some of it.
So, the mower for twenty-two grand, is that the really wide nine-foot, I think it was? You talked about the three decks? Okay. So, that might look like a big price tag, but the amount of time that'll save staff, there's a return there for everybody to understand, so it's a very, it's a much bigger mower than what we have today, so I can't remember what she told me, but it's a considerable amount less time that you'd spend mowing the soccer fields.
Well, and right now, just the way the weather's been going, the grass is growing like spring, and the mowers can't keep up. So, if we had a third mower, one of the full timers could easily, if they had a party, we could just jump on it and help them stay on schedule. Because right now, by the time they get this tall, they're, you know, they're leaving windrows everywhere, and they haven't mowed twice to chuck up their stuff. It's just, it's a good year for grass, but a bad year for, due to late August, they're working partial weeks, and they're happy to come in with everything. Loader two, in theory, if we get approved for a new skid loader, our skid loader's going to Kelly at the golf course, which he needs pretty badly, too. He follows ours quite frequently to get jobs done, so there'd be no trade in value on the price, but it's a benefit to two people.
Then if you look up about a fourth of the way down the page, there's a line item for thirty thousand dollars professional services, and the notation is Aspen Park Master Plan. And what we're looking at there is now that we have the Peterson property, and we wanna make sure that everything is done correctly with that, you know, as you know, we already have hockey that would like to put in a building. We've got some things from the survey that, you know, might need to be fit out there as well. We need to decide where a secondary entrance will come into the park, which is badly needed for safety reasons. And so, instead of just having things kinda done willy-nilly, we've been working on putting together a master plan for what the usage will be, and we actually want to put some money towards this, get it professionally planned out, so we know where everything will lie, whether it be the hockey facility, parking lots, additional roads, multi-use fields, potentially more baseball and softball fields. So, with that master plan, we'll just wanna keep in, in mind that we did go through with, as a council, to look at extending park all the way to Highway eleven, so we're gonna have a lot of potential entrances there. So, I don't know that we'll get another entrance through that land that we already own, those few lots, so we'll just have to kinda keep that in mind and understand and, and work with the state and not use up our limited number of entrances into it, so... But I think there's definitely gonna be options there.
Park board, got anything else you wanna comment on? Council, any questions for the park board while we have them here?
Any more money, you guys?
We just wanna keep this in the...
You might wanna explain the fishing pier.
Oh, at McCarty?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, and Devin, I might have you jump in on this, too, but we, we've been for a couple of years now, I think, putting off some, or trying to maintain what's there right now, right?
Yeah. The, every time ice comes off, it's knocking the wall down, pushing blocks off, the wall's leaning, the wall is, I forget what the age of the wall is, but we either need to fix the wall, like the, the bigger mega blocks was an option, or this option is just get rid of the wall and just, you know, slope degrade down to the fishing pier. So, you still have, you're not losing the fishing pier. We're just either getting rid of the wall, fixing the wall, something like that. But it's, it needs to be a little either not there or beefier to handle the ice flow.
Twenty grand is which plan, then?
Uh, it could go either way, but I think we were more talking the taking the wall away and just re-sloping it. You know, you end up to re-slope it, we'd have to move a couple of lights.
Yeah, we'll have to move two lights, I think.
Yep. Yeah, then if we, you know, we can just mow it then and just keep it nice and sloped, and, you know, and then when the ice comes in, you know, it's gonna gouge out some grass, well, it's relatively easy to replace, so...
So, just for our new council members, the park board was formed in twenty-eleven? When was it, guys?
Twelve.
Twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve. And it was really designed to provide recommendations to the council, so all they deal with is our park system, and so we have three of our members here tonight. John Jacobson is our chairman, and we also have Adam Rothenberger on the council, too, and then I serve as the, the council rep. And I, I don't think, I don't think we would be as far in our park system as we are without the park board, so I wanna thank you guys for your service. They're here every month, they're here tonight. Last time, last month, we had two meetings, and so they get paid the big bucks, the thirty bucks, thirty bucks a meeting, that we're trying to move to forty.
Yeah, we're moving that up to forty, or five, at least.
But we wanna thank you for your service, guys, because they're out in the community, and they hear the things that people want, so they're really our eyes and ears, so thanks for coming.
And the tree board.
And the tree board, yes, we are the tree board. Joe was a little bitter about that tree board, yeah.
Took away my tree board from me.
Yeah, 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 okay. So, if you have any more questions for them, you can contact them or contact myself. Thanks, thanks for coming, appreciate it. Moving on, then where do we go?
Do you wanna, do you wanna talk about senior citizens in the rec center?
Oh, sure.
On page twenty-six.
Sure.
You know, the senior citizen is the rent that we pay the VFW for the senior citizens to have their monthly or bimonthly meetings, twice monthly, and then the rec center is the summer rec program. You know, we operate at BE. If you don't have any questions... We'll warn them. We'll warn them before you come in. Page twenty-nine, forestry and nursery, ash trees. We've got fifty thousand dollars proposed. Devin's hopefully getting done with the inventory soon.
Yeah, the town's done, or the, the street trees.
How many?
Eight hundred-ish.
That's not bad. So, once we get that number in the parks, we'll know how many ash trees we have in town that, that then it'll, it'll be a recommendation, do you wanna treat them, do you wanna let them die or cut them down prior to them dying? You know, Devin has talked about saving certain ash trees in the parks, not all of them certainly, but some of the critical ones that are, are nice big trees and provide good shade for the amenities. The street trees, I think, are gonna be an issue that the council's gonna need to discuss and figure out what we're going to do, if anything. You know, I think Sioux Falls, last I talked to them, they aren't gonna treat any trees in the boulevards. If the property owner, adjacent property owners want to, they can, but the city of Sioux Falls doesn't plan on doing it. That was the last I heard. So, the fifty thousand would go to either treatment and/or removal. Libraries, we don't have a request, haven't heard anything from the school on any changes, or I think the last one was carpeting and something else. Yeah, AC. I think it was AC and carpet. That was two years ago now. Or that was last year, seventeen. Yep. So, they haven't submitted anything. Promoting the city, general fund expenditures. So, just real quick, on the, just hopping back to the trees, so in, in the past, we've brought out that mobile unit to kinda chip up trees and stuff. What is the estimated cost of that usually? Do we have any idea? Because what I'm thinking is, is if the, if we're gonna have a whole bunch of ash trees go down, maybe we put it in the budget to bring that out, so as a service to the residents, we foot the bill for chipping it potentially? I don't know. I'd have to go back and look. I can't remember.
I don't remember what it cost. It was pretty expensive, but I think you're gonna run into the issue that Sioux Falls is gonna be using everybody at a hundred and fifty mile radius, and you're not gonna find anybody to take care of.
That's, yeah, what I was wondering, so with it, I mean...
We use Mueller pallet, they're...
Is that what we did?
They're out of T.
Yep. We had, Buskerut came in last time.
Yeah, that's right, Buskerut, that's the last one.
Because Mueller was booked.
They were in twelve. They took the twelve and Buskerut did the other one.
Yep. Just something to, you know, think about as we start having trees go down. It probably won't hit this next year, but the year after that, it could potentially start really hitting us hard, and that would be something that would be fairly simple for us to do, is have a dedicated tree dump and... Yeah, we'll need to figure out where to, where to put them. Yeah, 'cause if we, we should, should be thinking about that, 'cause we don't, it'll be a mess if we don't, so... Yeah, the others, the other, the other thing with the, the chipping of trees, you can only cut them down before Memorial Day and after Labor Day, so there's gonna be a fairly short window that everybody's gonna want. Promoting the city, wages, that is Kim at the chamber. The chamber reimburses us for all costs associated with Kim's employment. We've got flower baskets in there, Joe. Have not heard about automania, so we didn't include anything in, in the budget. Improvements not buildings, two welcome signs and four readers. We've talked for a while now about adding two more welcome signs, one on coming in from the south on Highway eleven, and then one coming in from the east. And then, we'd also like to put on each of those welcome signs message boards, electronic message boards that we would control here at City Hall. That would get us four message boards, then, and then the two new signs. Yep.
Did they talk about that for a long?
It's a, oh, yeah, it's, it's an awesome communication thing. A lot of people use them nowadays. They just make sense. On the automania's, there's been some interest about having a city show instead of automania, so that's, last year, we budgeted ten thousand, and we didn't spend any of that, I assume? Correct. So... Then with the welcome signs, we just need to figure out where we're gonna put them. So, if anybody's got any ideas? Well, we, we own some land, you know, coming in from the east, we've got Bethany Drainage or the Bethany Lift. That might be a little bit far out of town. You're only gonna hit Bethany folks. You know, we've got, we've got property at the golf course. We could, we could do it there. You don't wanna bring it too far into town, but you don't wanna miss people either. McCarty Park is a possibility. And then, on the south end, we talked about possibly where Sioux Boulevard used, or west of the nursery, where Sioux Boulevard used to intersect the highway, there's some space there that we could, we could possibly put it in. Or up on the three lots that we own, so we'll find some spots for them. Quite a few. I mean, it's always been a thought, but I think it would be a nice way to communicate, so... The next page is debt. Can't change those numbers. So, right now, if you look at no changes in the general fund revenues versus expenditures, we're about two hundred thousand plus, revenue over expenditures. Yep. So, that's, that's before we get into some other stuff, before transfers out. The next page, we've got the third penny sales tax. We pay the dues to Seacog Makita, the municipal league, the chamber, pay for our portion of the legislature, subsidies to the Brandon Development Foundation. That is for interest on the Roe vang industrial park note, and it's just in case, Chuck.
Can I make a comment on that? So, just today, we had somebody exercise their first right of refusal, so I have another fifty-nine thousand, so this can be reduced to a hundred. And it doesn't need to be paid out if you just wanna keep... out if you just want to keep it as a line item. Um, because if we get more property sold, I may not need any of it, so it can be reduced to a hundred easily. Thank you.
Um, did we spend that much for Chamber Day at the legislature? Because, you know, they changed that program around.
It's the same this year.
It was?
And then, um, if you remember, I passed out a letter last year, or last budget meeting for, that the chamber sent to us, they're requesting three percent increase, and we typically do all of these at CPI, and CPI is.
For the, the county supplied CPI, two point one.
So that's, what's in the budget is two point one, so if you want.
Street maintenance. Primary thing out of there is the slurry seal, and then we've, we'd planned on doing a joint repair striping on Holly this year, but since we lost our engineer, that kind of fell through, um, so we're planning on doing that next year. Uh, striping and joint repair, we've got some joints that need repairing, and then also, uh, with concrete streets, everybody thinks they're maintenance-free, but every so often, you do have to go in, you have to pull the old caulking out of between the sections and put new stuff in. It's not caulking, it's rubber stuff.
Rubberized seal, yeah.
So if you, if you, if you look at, um, the joints kind of, uh, just west of Sixth Street, where a lot of vehicles turn, we're starting to see some wear and tear. Overall, the street's in very good shape, there's just a, a couple of areas that, uh, we need to explore. Tammy's looking at either full depth or partial depth, uh, repair of those joints. So, she's working on that. We take our curb and gutter out of there, we do that every year in the microseal area, or slurry seal, gotta change that to slurry seal. That's a no-no.
Sorry.
East of the golf course. And then we've got our sign replacements, our normal painting, uh, which would be, uh, we're rotating those streets, we're trying to hit them every three years or so, it's like Park, Sioux.
Last time we did it, we did get them all done for a hundred, but.
Okay.
So, we'll just have to see if they're in the area, they seem like they give us no mold charge hardly, so that we can get it all done instead of paying five thousand dollars for them all out.
No, painting, painting the stripes. Redwood.
Redwood.
And then a proposal to bump up our patching costs. John's, John's been looking at, uh, they tried something down in Harrisburg, um, kind of a partial milling overlay along the curb line, so he's monitoring that this year. I think that just went in this year. Yeah, so he's taking a look at that, uh. Yeah. You know, it's, we can't do the milling, but we could potentially do the overlaying. Raleigh and I have talked, um, we do most of the patching, I shouldn't say we, Public Works does most of the patching in the slurry seal area. We've talked about maybe contracting that out, because that takes two months, month and a half. You know, so it takes a good month, month and a half to do that, um, if we farm that out to a contractor, that would free up our crew to do other stuff, whether it's some patching on our own, or flushing hydrants, jetting sewers, some of that stuff.
So is that included in the, in the patch, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand?
Yes, and, um, there's, there's some, uh, some of that patching, some we usually get the, some of our supplies are hanging coming out of that too, but if we do the, uh, crack sealing, continue to do crack sealing, now we can still take that out of our supplies, but we usually save that percentage.
So, so you don't have any increase in that part of the budget, Raleigh, right? From this year, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand?
The patching was.
I'm looking.
This year for a hundred.
Yeah, but I'm looking at the bottom line, the total. So, based on our street conditions, is that adequate for you?
No, uh, the, uh.
Am I reading it wrong?
We, we've got about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars of annual revenue coming in, in the, in the street maintenance fund, but we do have a current balance in there of about four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, we'll get second half tax payments, and then we've got some pretty big bills yet to come out of there, primarily the, the slurry seal, but we'll, you know, I would anticipate we should have a half a million in reserves in that account, hopefully, at the end of the year, so.
So, but it didn't change from last year because the painting amount went down.
Yeah, but, okay, so my question is, we have some concerns with our streets, we're keeping the dollar amount the same for our, our expenditures, do we need to bump that up?
Certainly could.
Some of the streets that we're questioning are gonna be some of them that are gonna get the total overall repair, you know, with the full remodels like we did in South Circle. Well, some of those streets are gonna start getting that, so you don't want to stick a ton of money into it and then go back a year and tear it all back out.
No, I agree with that, I'm just trying to get it in.
No, we.
Is there a list on what those, uh, streets are scheduled for total repairs?
Tammy's working on a plan on that.
Yep.
We do have two, three large projects next year.
Yep.
One street.
After next year, after we get the main sewer interceptor, um, down to Aspen, the plan is to start knocking off one street a year through the core part of town.
So then in twenty twenty, would we start, would we start on the first or would we start on the fourth?
We would probably start on Cardinal, because you always start on the downhill side, and Cardinal has some storm sewer issues that, we can't do that until we get the railroad portion of it done. So that might be year one, year two would be, let's just say, from Dogwood, Maine, from Dogwood to, to Holly, and then a block west, and then the following year would be from, from second to, so that, that's kind of the plan. So it's gonna be four, five years, six years before we get to fourth, so what John and I had talked, yep, what John and I had talked about was possibly doing this milling overlay concept starting at fourth and moving east. It doesn't look like we need to do it on seventh, eighth. Fourth, fifth, and sixth are the primary issues.
Or couldn't we like do two streets a year, and as Chuck says, bar, borrow some money?
We could.
And try to accelerate this project?
We could, the, the, the problem is staging, at least the way I look at it, it's staging. You know, if you do Maine and then a block west, those folks have to get to their houses, and it's gonna be torn up all summer. So if you do two streets, and you can't, you can't skip a block, because then your sewers aren't gonna, you know, we're dropping the sewers, we're gaining four feet or so, so you can't jump from first to, or from Maine to second. So in order to at least not inconvenience people too much, it's gonna look like a bomb goes off anyway.
Yeah, they'd have to park.
They'd have to park, uh, a couple of blocks away. We always try to get it so that hopefully they get along with their, their neighbors, so they can park on, you know, half a block away from their house and maybe sneak through backyards, uh, or side streets. Yep.
I don't know, I, I still think I like Dan's.
I still like Dan's idea, I, I think we should really look into that, because fourth has really suffered, um, through the years, and if it's gonna be four or five years before we get to it, is it still, so what like, what would be a cost? Would, do we even know like a cost estimate of what it would cost?
No. It's one of these John was looking at, um. Well. If you'd be looking at, if you do a, a two-inch mill on the edge, that's kind of what John was talking about, it wasn't a full, a full width mill, it was just on the edges, eight feet roughly, um, and if memory serves me right, one inch of asphalt per square yard's about a hundred and ten pounds, you'd be looking at about two hundred and twenty pounds per square yard. So, you know, ten square yards is gonna get you a ton at fifty-six bucks a ton, not including cost for.
And Dana and I had the opportunity to meet with a resident, well, a couple of residents, uh, that live on Cardinal yesterday, and, uh, talked to them, and, you know, their, their road's pretty beat up, I mean, that's one of the roads that, you know, we come out of our city shop, and that's one road that, that's kind of a pretty busy road for us on city traffic is, as well as residents, and, I mean, that road gets beat up too, and, you know, I guess, um, you know, I think Chuck has a pretty valid point that, you know, if there's ways to exploit this by, you know, being selective on our financing, that definitely makes sense to look at those things. I'd like to see some money set aside in this specific fund for street improvements. You know, I had talked a little bit about that before on how, uh, different communities around us don't always take from their water and sewer fund, they take from a street fund, and this is that fund where it would come from a certain percent, so I, I'd, I'd be an advocate to put some money in this, this spot. Another piece to kind of build off what you were asking, Brett, um, three years ago, Stockwell did a, I think it was three, maybe five years ago, did a study on all of our streets, so they've got a van that they drive around, fancy cameras, basically grade all of our streets. It's my understanding that Tammy's having a little bit of an issue getting that information from Stockwell right now, um, so we need to be pushing for that, it's something we've paid for, uh, the feedback that she's been getting is that we need to pay and have another study. Well, she should really just see what we have and what we've already paid for, so at some point, if Tammy continues to struggle with that, Brian, please reach out to us, the council, and we can make sure that we can.
We can take care of that.
Yeah.
I was unaware that.
So.
She hadn't received that information.
Yeah, if, if you need more horsepower, please let us know.
So what if?
Yeah.
No, that was done prior to Paula working here.
No, we've got, we've got, we've got the report.
What if?
Stockwell's though.
No, we have, we have the hard copy report.
Somewhere.
So, going back to Barb's thought for a second, what if you staggered them with enough distance where it wouldn't be such a residential inconvenience? Like what if you did Cardinal and Fourth and Dogwood and Third?
Total reconstruction? We, we, we can't, because we're dropping the sewer down here on the bottom end to gain depth. So.
Even if you're on, even if you're six blocks away? Okay.
Everything flows this way. Everything flows south and west in our sewer, so if we're lowering the sewer down here four feet, and we jump up to Fifth Street, we can't lower it four feet because the sewer can't get there.
Can we hear that in the screen at the fall? Or does it take all summer to get one?
And this fund, this particular fund is mostly for street maintenance, this fund is not meant for total reconstruction. So we have capital project funds for total reconstruction, but this particular fund is not for total reconstruction of items, this is just for maintenance. If you would want to do just a mill and overlay on Fourth Street, that would be this fund, and we'd have to see the doc, the cost on that mill and overlay, because currently right now, we're at a dollar fifty per front footage on a home, so that brings in approximately four hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year, um, and if, we'll have to see what it would be for a mill and overlay on Fourth Street on whether we need to bump that up to kind of, for offset the cost on that.
Yeah, I've asked him for them. The other thing to Tim's, uh, talking about, you know, getting the, talking about the park or, or the employees come out, um, have we talked to the, has the city itself talked to the residents involved with Fourth, Fifth, and Sixth Streets to just to see what kind of they want, uh, for the future in the event that we can do multiple projects or bigger projects at a time, to see if they would be of interest to have that inconvenience, to have that street fixed versus, um, a simple fix to start with? Would that make sense as well, or, or has the city in the past had that discussion with those folks that would be significantly involved for a longer period of time?
So, when we talked to the resident, it was kind of an aha moment, um, which was interesting, because we explained that the sewer's still pretty darn good underneath that road, so we don't really want to replace the top road until the sewer's ready to be replaced on Cardinal, so there's this timing issue where you put a whole brand-new road over it, and then five years from now, now you gotta tear it up to put a new sewer in. When we took the time to explain that to the resident, it was, they, they got it, and they understood, okay, we may have to hunker down for a little bit, uh, so I think we could be a little more proactive on that, uh, but as for the, could we do two streets at once, you know, I think that's, you know, if we could bring the people in this core area and talk to them, I mean, that's, you know, maybe it's a headache they'd want to live with, because otherwise, shoot, to get through the whole core, you're talking ten years.
You can, you can try.
You can't, you can't do, you can do two streets at a time, yes.
Right, right.
But you can't jump.
No, so.
We can try, but we usually run into, um, in Sylvan Circle area, run into older folks, disabled folks.
Sure.
And those kind, where we already, we have to see what they can do and how they can get into their home, and over that, that three to four months to get into there, so we can see what we have, but when you're doing two streets and for those to get in there, it's, so we can see.
Yeah, and there's, there's some things that maybe Tammy can help us too with pha-phasing, and, um, I don't, I guess I don't remember how the main sewer trunk mains run, but sometimes you're better off to do the crisscross up with your main run, and then do temporary tie-ins down to the depth, and then start going north-south, I don't know in this specific case, but the other thing is, is you might want to kind of hopscotch up the roads, uh, to try and keep it so you're limiting, so it's not all tore up at once and that kind of thing, but there's different ways to, to play that game, I guess, so.
But we want to start with any events of twenty twenty, but we didn't get that truck.
Correct. I asked him quite some time ago.
If John's not gonna be there, then.
What does it say, can we move on if they won't give a timeline anymore?
I don't, I.
We can do market research, and I, we can call, pay the companies to, to pass down the, uh. I'd draw a board, give them the timeline, like Monday, if we can't get it.
Yeah, but that's possible, we could call Harrisburg and see what their, um.
You know somebody down there?
Oh, yeah. We know Harrisburg.
And we can put it in here, but typically, as Joe and I know, we, if you come out at the end and we are sure, so, then you gotta start deciding what our career, we can put it in and then it's a place holder.
And we've kept that at a buck fifty per linear foot for the last two years. We'd had a plan at one point in time to increase that to two. Yep, we were, we were gonna increase it twenty-five cents a, a year for. Uh, at that point in time, we were cash flowing the activities that we planned out of that fund, but if we're gonna increase those activities, we can certainly take a look at the fee. And then we've got, uh, debt service, uh, the bid at the convention center, I think we talked about that, that's the Business Improvement District, the STIP, street funding, that's the one point six million that we're gonna transfer out of the STIP fund to the Holly project, to pay for a good portion of that. The rest of it's debt, uh, the TIFF Conference Center, that's the TIFF portion. Country Club will be going off after next year. Country Club will be going off after next year. Capital Projects on page thirty-four, here are the three big projects that we've got. The Holly-Dogwood Main Street Project. Yep. Then we've got the Rushmore Drive-Sylvan Circle Project and the Redwood Mill and Storm Looping.
So, you know, from a project standpoint, we think these are the top three that we need to do wrong?
Yes.
So, uh, six, seven, ten million?
Oh yeah.
It'll be...
No, nope. Water Fund.
And then Storm on that, Brian, that's, are we using any of the Storm set aside money towards this or is that just coming completely out of capital then? Because typically we'll have like two hundred and fifty thousand-ish a year.
Well, no, that was, that was this year with the dedicated project on, at Redwood.
Yep, so now that, we won't use that this year?
Nope.
So, hey, maybe we could get some new signs this year.
And we're gonna use part of that for the work out at Bethany.
Oh, for that reconstruction?
Yep.
That B and P, okay.
Water Fund, source of supply, we've got two point two million in for Well Eight and Well Nine. Assuming Well Nine turns out good and it's testing. Purification, we've got the filter media. And then we've got the towers down on distribution for nine point seven million. So your, your ten million in capital costs just went up.
Oh yeah, and I've had the water main looping contracts that we just added for Aspen and Redwood on there too. I haven't noted as my update, but that's five, about five hundred and fifty thousand too.
I think Tammy's got a meeting next week with Stockwells. They're about ninety or ninety-five percent complete.
So just, it's a very big spend. Do we have any money in the budget to do a peer review on that design? I'd feel a lot better doing a peer review on that water tower design. I don't think Stockwell's designed water towers before.
Typically not, but if you remember at the Water Development Committee meeting, the three engineers said, there's not much to a water tower. A peer review really, on a water tower design really doesn't provide much because it's a stem and a bowl and some pumps. But if the council wants to, we can certainly look at that. Peer review won't, won't be much. I would guess ten to fifteen thousand.
How, how much can slow the cost?
Um, you know, if we go out and, and ask, we can put a fairly tight ti- I mean, there's not much to review. It's, it's a stem and a bowl and pumps. We can certainly put a fairly tight timeline on it.
Just because I knew, was, was there other bids with regard to this nine point seven million dollar?
That's just a cost estimate.
Cost estimate, okay.
Yeah, that's the cost estimate at this point in time.
Okay.
The design's being done, bids will go out net early next year.
Okay.
And then administration, moving down the line there, two pickups and a computer.
And then I will...
Oh, yes, there you go.
Houston talked about software and emailing.
So this is instead of mail?
Yes.
Or an addition?
Well, it'd be an addition, so they could do either or.
So my whole guy that was complaining that it didn't spill, it could be a way to, you could get it both ways or just one way?
Not a hundred percent sure on that. Probably still could do it both ways. So there's two different components here. There's a component, like the whole entire thing would be getting a utility billing online. There's a central cast collection. There's an online component where they could go online, they could see their bills, see their history, pay their bill. That would be everything encompassing all, as well as emailing bills and such. That whole entire thing is fifteen thousand eight hundred, just to get it up and running and get the program. Then annual costs on that would be forty-five hundred. If you just want to look at adding on the emailing portion of it, that would be the forms overlay and the Tyler output processor there. That would be fifty-two hundred to get the program. That'd be a one-time fee and then your annual fees are eleven hundred. So it just depends on what direction you want to go and then if you want to start it this year or next year, so I can kind of gauge that in the budget. I'm not sure on the efficiencies down here. There's always pluses and minuses to software. Software is nice sometimes for the residents, but for us, sometimes I'm not sure that it saves time. So I do have the, is it the second page? Third page? Third page. I kind of got the startup fee there. If you were just gonna do the mailing process, that'd be fifty-two hundred. Currently, right now, we pay thirty-eight cents per mailing and twenty-seven cents per processing fee, so we pay a total of sixty-five cents per bill that goes out to you guys. So we currently, let's say, it would just be the ACH people that would sign up and they don't have to, but we currently have eleven hundred people sign up on ACH. So if I'm saying hypothetically, if all those people would sign up for the emailing process, it'd take about seven months to pay off the fifty-two hundred. And then we have eleven hundred dollars every year to pay that and that would take less than two months to pay off, so. No, I didn't figure the fifteen thousand. Fifteen thousand, yeah, the fifteen, sixteen thousand is more, yeah, additional. Yeah, right. I do quite a bit of the software stuff just because I, I get it, I'm, I'm good at it, I, I deal with Inquote a lot. I would work with them along with Judy, honestly, in the process and getting it all switched over. And once everything is up and running, it would be mostly Judy's to take on. The, the emailing portion, I did talk to Inquote on that, that's a pretty simple one. That is basically just adding their email into their account and then, I think it's just punching a button that they want their statement emailed versus send them to the, that could be a start.
Yeah, I think just not having to send out those bills, you know, amongst all this stuff that impacts, especially if you're being engaged, most likely you're gonna control that one anyway, so that, you know, if we could add this control positive impact, that's good for us, so, you know, if that's where we just started that, it's a bit, um, seeing what we're gonna do back there.
Yeah, we'll have to push it out there and get it out there, saying that we are offering this now and they'll have to provide emails and we'll have to get those entered in, so it will, even that will take some time to get that up and running. I'd probably recommend starting out with the email process and then maybe the following year, see if we can keep moving forward on that, but I would say starting with email would be a good option.
You know, we have the email option. The, the stuffer that we used to put in the bills and put around the town, they might see it more than they would the stuff.
Oh, is that possible? So like, how do you specifically pull that email list that are for bills and, you know, because what we'll probably have to do is send out a, to everybody else, instead of what's your address, one, two, and, by the way, check here if you want to get extra junk mail from the city, right?
Sure.
So, it's just one of those, if we're putting in that email address, it'd be nice and it's really easy, the party's set to just push stuff out because our email list isn't very big right now, but it is, so.
No. I'm gonna, I can ask them if a stuffer can be added to the bill in the email to... Yeah. So they don't get a separate email essentially, but if, we can do either. Right, yep, that would work too. So, as far as timeline, are we looking at January first to get this up and rolling? Next year? So we're looking at 2019, basically implementing this and get this up and rolling. Okay, that, that way I know to get it. Yeah. Might have some shelter software to work on too, so. So we'll, we'll get that in and we'll move forward with the email part of it.
So as far as revenue, we'll have more revenue than expenditures in the water fund for next year.
Well, after I added in the water main looping.
We don't have as much as we did.
No, I think it went down a hundred and some. Distribution.
Okay.
But at the same point, it would also give us the ability to have a little bit of protection. So, last year, oh, I've turned on the door, forgot for one minute a day. Our bill was extremely high. Had we had the smart owners, the city would have had a smart panel off and said, hey, here's stuff, something's going on, so we could have gotten a call. So, there's a lot of power to listen here since Sioux Falls has had pretty good success with them. So, not necessarily this year, but we started facing those, and it's, it was... I, I think they rolled them out, so, you know, moving forward. Right, and then all the councils would get, uh, that kind of stuff, and you just be aware of, this year I have minor places, my offices extended as we were placed. I think there's a structure that you could probably to like bring well towers or something.
Yeah, that's the other thing, you, you're gonna have to have towers, if they have to use different, more than one tower depending on the stretch you're trying to get. I just had a conversation with the people who provide us with our water meters now. We talked about this because he said you can go with a different style of plan where the city hall can see that water usage, but the person can't. Sure, he said there's also those ways to have ability for them to get online to pay their bill and then you put it into one page and then they can get on the bill and see their meter. His professional opinion, he said that nine times out of ten, when you show everybody or give them the ability to see their water usage, me personally, I can get on, I mean, I've seen waters and see what I use. It was great for first and most, and I have used it since. And that's what he said they see, that tends to drop off and if you're paying for a service that you don't really...
Right.
But that's all built into the plan that you want to get. I mean, if you go full blown, that's the half a million. And that's probably gonna have to be, due to our new water towers and stuff, we'd be paying plumbers to upgrade some of their plumbing because they're gonna have to have pressure reducer in there. You're gonna have to change out meters and that's gonna be a scheduling nightmare.
Right.
I know when we changed out the meters the last time, it took, I would say, better part of a year, almost two years to get every meter found and changed out.
Yeah, but it's just something that, as we look at transition, we spent, what is it, a day or two, driving around town, breaking meters, so, you know, there's gives and takes, so it's something that, you know, as we look at our system aging, on, you get to that point where if you're over all these things to go to automation instead of, is it possible for next year, just work on doing some, close?
We, yeah, we've talked with the meter supplier as to what it would cost, just for the meters. They're four hundred bucks, three ninety?
But if we didn't look at that, would it be next year, because we looked at costs and, oh, there's just so many...
If you want to move that way, we, we could take a look at phasing it in over two, three, four, five years.
Yeah, water conservation, we've dealt with several times about that, and, you know, we can start integrating them in new construction, in a couple of years and then totally integrate them more, maybe a few days or something.
So I think we need to put some money in the budget for that because I, what I'm looking at, what I'm looking at, is that where we would put something, we asked for twenty thousand, do we have that?
I would, it all depends on, yeah, it all depends on how you want to do that rebate for the, if, if we want to do it as a refund or a rebate on their bill, so we give them a fifty dollar credit on their bill. You know, we could...
I think we could do that, but I think we also may want to consider some sort of orders on the new sprinkler systems that they have to install those with sprinklers, that's what I'm...
So, where's the, what's the part? I think that's where you go on with the prime, right? So, if we're doing that as a bill credit, it doesn't necessarily have to hit...
Doesn't show up as an expenditure, would show up on the revenue side. We just reduce revenues by twenty thousand dollars. If we wanted to give them a check, I would, I would put a twenty thousand dollar expenditure in the line item. Well, yeah, I mean, it's gonna be relatively easy.
They're pressed at twenty.
Yep.
That's what I've noted.
Okay.
We're going to do it as a bill credit, that's what I'm understanding. So if they apply for something that's a bill credit, so we're not technically...
It's fine with me.
I mean, I think check, right.
Yep.
So if you think about it, you know, us giving the twenty dollar credit, really our costing of sold is much less than that, so.
It's, that's fine, doesn't make much difference to us. I think it's easier just to do it as a credit.
I think so.
It is, it is. Hey Christina! Hey Christina, give this person a credit. What's so tough about that?
So let's say that we say twenty thousand, so then they come to us with a program, they develop a program, they come to us with the program, we authorize it. And so maybe we only get ten thousand every day to come here, so we're not really outwilling that.
It'd be a first come, first served, it'd be capped at the twenty.
Yep, we have to do twenty thousand and then we can be very specific about what we answer for, so, you know, that'll be, you know, if you can help us determine. That's why, that's why I write it up, so, you know, is it, is it? You know, is it twenty, the max, it's twenty bucks if they put her in, whatever it is, I mean, we can set that up. You know, that'll make, have some good people there.
I don't think they'll get twenty thousand every day.
That's, that's just it. Really have thirty-three hundred water bank accounts in town, you take that tax twenty bucks, you're not even getting ten thousand.
So. Well, we'll need to take a look and, and decide what we want to recommend and say, we will rebate fifty bucks on this one because it's better. We're not gonna rebate anything on this thirty dollar unit.
Right.
Because it doesn't meet what we want it to do. I think what, what we'd be looking at is a fairly, I don't want to say high tech, but a much more knowledgeable machine and user friendly. So that folks, you know, right now, a lot of them, they go out and set even odd and then the month changes. And it, it, it's not a smart enough machine that it can't figure out, well, August has thirty-one days in it, so it's off. So we'll need to spec out what type of, of controller we want to pay for.
But don't you think that we need some sort of order?
Yep, yep. No, if, if they're gonna do, if they want to do mailers or coloring books or...
Still don't, don't, there was just a post that so far yellow, there are people that think that yellow means you cannot be getting outside watering above since Tuesday. So I think we need to hold it more on specifics of the program and that it's a lot watering program, we're still a little bit.
Yep.
What if we did five thousand, you know, for general expenses, not other things, you know, size and everything, and then fifteen thousand for everything?
I don't know, that's like we don't make orange.
We'll, we'll put flowers on the front.
Or Christmas decorations.
But I don't know, we probably can't even tell about.
Well.
I think they're very aware. But.
So we'll give it five now?
So we'll take fifteen thousand down to the red.
Hey, I just want to point out, I can add plus one of the flowers. I just didn't want to die on that bill again, okay?
So on the software, AutoCAD or Fullseed, is it AutoCAD Light or is that just the fees for that or?
That cool line item, it's for our in-code software, AutoCAD in the SCADA program, in code is the majority of it.
I think that's just our licensing stuff.
I only have licenses, just about three hundred, I guess it's.
Is it three hundred each?
Yeah.
Something like that.
Each license we have.
Five.
Five licenses. Paul Clark has one, Melissa has one, Tammy has one, I have one.
And then we've got ten thousand in GIS equipment in the traffic engineering stuff. And Marcus recommends that we buy a drone. And that somebody get a drone license, an N-107 or something like that, I can't remember. Yep, Marcus wants to come back.
Maybe the water conservation needs are five thousand, buy this old drone.
I don't know. And Marcus is coming back next year. Yep, so he's got some meetings planned with Tammy, kind of throughout the winter to come down and keep everything rolling.
So there's discussion about GIS in front of the, uh, do you know, as far as a public tool? Is there costs associated with that or do you have a budget?
There, there will be, you know, I, like I said, we, we anticipate the third year is, is kind of the, we don't anticipate having this ready for much public consumption until 2020. We're still building it. But eventually, if we're gonna have it, uh, I think the way it works, we buy credits, um, from the, the company. So if we've got multiple people using it, we're gonna have to increase those, those credits. Uh, electrical fund, that's the streetlights. We're projecting a, about a six thousand dollar loss. Did you?
That's taken care of.
Okay, she took care of it. Sewer fund. Nothing really, I mean, the main cost there is the treatment to Sioux Falls. We projected the six percent rate increase on, it has been, uh, they give us, they set their rates three years ahead. So we've got nineteen's rates already. And that includes our EQ credit. We'll take a look at the SDC charges. Other than that, there's, uh, a hundred and fifty thousand proposed for lift station rehab. We're gonna need that or?
It could probably be cut somewhat.
Yeah.
I've been having to do a lot, but I think I've been pushing my supply prepared.
Okay. And then the lift station loan principal is ninety-eight thousand three hundred. We add both the principal and the interest to the principal line.
Do too many numbers.
Yep. We'll probably have to have the fir-, probably not until after we have at least the first reading on the, on the ordinance. So I think the wages that we've got, uh, proposed will accommodate any of those adjustments, except one, probably. Um, other than that, in sewer, no major projects specifically for sewer.
Tammy does like to do that flow meter to test flows in certain areas and see if we're getting our I and I flows.
Flower gun, a couple of times, always fall short and don't get it or could rent it one couple of times too, so. That's what it's sort of different.
Yeah, I said right in the manhole and it actually takes a load and it'll tell you that it tracks it and it'll tell you what your flows were. Stockwell's has one down here, been for us for, they're part of two peaks, they forgot about it after the first peak. And they, they called and they asked and I said, you ever do the back out, I'll look at that. But they gave us all the data off of it, so you can tell what the ratings were, that, that's showing where you're getting your I and I somewhere down that end coming back work.
So we can use that to track I and I and then we've got, uh, Stockwell's has, no, we've got a sampler.
Yeah, we got a sampler.
So we can start tracking some of our, our higher, um, ammonia levels. To start tracking them upstream. Golf course, Zane, you sat so nice. Uh, taking a look, uh, we've got proposed in there, at, at least the request is a hundred thousand dollars for a well. Zane's got, Zane's been working on some pumps.
Yeah, I think we can, our other option is the electric pump. Kelly talked to the, his irrigation guy. And you can, um, get a floating pump that would be somewhat anchored away from the current. Kind of like a fountain that would push the water to irrigation. And initially, well, that's like a seven and a half horse, uh, horse, was not here to fix the issue, but. Because we figured you'd need a fifty horse in order to get the power. And so we don't really need that much power to go from pump house all the way to the river. So we cut that back, we had a bit for that, uh, eighteen thousand. Basically, it's a quarter sixty volt three phase. And then to build the, um, the gear control panel also, um, shut off by the, the vacuums. So just the, the pump part would be nineteen thousand and then the, the power of nineteen eighty is going to enter. So it's basically way cheaper than a well. And that, uh, pump wouldn't be in the way of anybody, how much, that could be down split rock. That's kind of what we, we have to deal with, basically, have the dangers.
So is this, is that a rule of this hundred thousand in the well or?
I'd replace it, I'd replace it for thirty-seven.
Yeah.
So this year, obviously, river super full and the river was super full this year, so being able to, uh, pull plenty of water out. What about in a dry year? How does that river look? How far out would that floating do dad have to be out in the river? Is there times where that river gets to the point? Where we couldn't suck enough, that would be my only fear is that.
We just have to keep going out, you know, far, far out, we have to keep that force. Always seem, I mean. Dry, dry. No, I don't pay attention to the river that much until.
For the year, I've lived here sometimes, it seems like the soon. More dry, sure, yeah, that's a good question.
Yeah, I talked to a long time resident a while ago and he says, split rock always runs. Regardless, there's always water in it.
As long as you can factor back. Yeah, it takes care of her, always.
So what's the main stakeholders that, that they call?
Well, Kelly initially, you're certain, that's, I mean, that's something that, that's something that, something we're gonna probably deal with eventually. I don't know that it's, uh, you know, I guess something that has to be done next year by the priority, because right now we're, you know, we do the flooding number eleven. And the current gets started to eat water, you have to do that whole thirteen to, I don't remember how many years ago, but. I think that costs sixty or half, I'm not sure, seventy years ago maybe. But that was a little, I'm sorry.
What do you have to do?
Basically, stabilize the bank of the river, right? So is that something I can say about the quarter or something in the budget or? You know, usually, you know, when you really start to have, you have a flood, that's.
So we got four years.
I wouldn't wait four years, but I didn't, you know, we can, I mean, build up for it, I didn't know anything to that. But we got, we got about twenty yards till it starts to get to our fairway, so.
We'll have to take a look at it at some point in time and, and Zane pointed out the other day, you did the last one during the winter.
Right.
Because it was right across the river from Pioneer Park.
They actually had, they actually did it from the park.
From the park side, so it was pretty nice and easy this.
It was a little more challenging, you could get to do that.
So there's probably gonna be some damage to the course, if, you know, if you're lugging truckloads of riprap all the way over there.
So is that something to water the budget for next year or is that something?
Well, I guess, you know, there's, I guess you've got to prioritize work. Something to prove if anyone could go, of course, I guess I would put, you know, something a little higher, you know, a little higher. You know, we got a shaft, uh, gone, nice pipe, really, we have huge, that's, that one caught eight thousand. What's that? That one caught eight hundred. I'd rather see, you think that's a priority, I think that would be, that's something that the golfers will really, that's a perfect spot for it. I think building a major, um, the issue we break it there, I don't know, we have to break it later, we have to raise the green a little bit because of the flood, so.
Do we have the air conditioning in here for next year or is that this year?
I just have to, I think we're, we're pointing out doing that this year. I already have some other various, some random funding to do that. I really see us do that this year. The air conditioning, if you think the cutting green priority, like that's part of the air.
Yeah.
Especially with your tournament coming up in July.
Right, I don't know if we could get it totally perfect condition by then, but. I think about all our costs there. Unless doing some, unless doing some work ourselves, but the biggest challenge, like second, I don't know, if you have access to black dirt, like looking at. Depends on how much.
Oh, black dirt's kind of a precious commodity.
That would be, that would be the thing that would cost the most money.
There's, uh. Other thing I think you would talk about was flipping, uh, driver's range.
Well, yeah. And that, like, if it's black dirt, because of the, that's where you have, you know, maybe you can steal some from there, if you put that at the same time, what basically, what, that's, you know, forty years old, not level. Same thing, check with Dennis and see if we've got any, you know, that's. Okay. I don't think there's any left up there, I think they've got how much everything leveled off up there, so. And use mostly what they took out of.
Are we done with all the hard facts or do we have a little bit?
No, we still have, we still got some that we have to do, we have other part priorities kind of changing because we start, we gotta deal with these seeking off fairways. We may have to push that back a couple of weeks, or even maybe that's right.
I didn't know if we wanted to try to get those down for that state tournament.
Well, we'll get some done, yeah, we'll get, we'll almost have everything in our master plan page before the state.
Then the state damage.
State, uh, match play. Uh, July, same week, July. So if you think that flooding green is priority, I, I'd put that in. And then, and then, you know, in years to come, I think. Rope paint, whatever.
What about some of the water, having, you know, by the flooding, are you, are you upset something that caused? What about some of the more waters, and having, you know, by the putting green, how's that something that costs?
We have, we're still, we're still, we're still looking at, pushing that as well.
So what would it take?
Well, we, right now, we use the rock sales basically for our hard paths.
Yeah, because those are really positive things.
No. I think we raised, okay, oh.
And not here, shows a tractor, and they're required to push that off over a couple of years, so.
Yeah, we, we've got the lease numbers, estimated lease cost of about fourteen thousand. Two to two, yep, yeah, it'll go from eighty down to fourteen.
How much black dirt are you talking?
Well, let's see, we're talking like a lot of six thousand, I don't know, maybe twelve, figure it out better than I can, six thousand square foot putting green. Kelly, ideally, you'd like to raise a three B, but that's a lot of dirt, that's a lot of dirt. How do you want to know, let me chuck a little bit in, but we could get by with maybe a foot, we just gotta raise a little bit because of, like I said, the flooding. Right now, that, that ground is quite a bit lower than our, like, our eighteen putting green. And we have had our putting green, well, about half, so, you know, we would want it fully underwater for extensive amount of time, although it's full grass, so.
Not have that air butter now.
Well, we're gonna have a lot of work on that putting green, getting it settled.
Yep. Is there any work that we want to start out this, or?
Yeah, to try and, uh, to try and have something established by July. Well, if we wanted to have some of them, I mean, we, yeah, we do have the, you have to see, like, a couple of years, it's pretty light. But I think you can, wait back grass, and see if it's breaking.
So we see that tractor air fighter was fourteen thousand.
Yep, no, total, total. Pro Shop. Zane has a staffing proposal.
Well, I, I know, uh, talking about Andrew, I know we've talked about this way this year, I guess, I would see the council will be open, you know, bringing him on full time, this is gonna be his fifth year. He, uh, pretty instrumental in our golf bodies and our tournaments, he's trained in golfing software. About a year and a half, but we completed with his PGA certification, so he'll have his class A certification. I don't know, I guess my, my point is, right now, he's, what he's making is basically the bottom twenty percent of what the survey is, I can give you guys a chart, if you want to look at it.
I've been asking about this for a long time, so.
I would certainly be supportive of it, because I was, uh.
Oof, ouch.
Ouch.
We have somebody else in the senior lunch, and pretty.
You gotta start planning for that, and, and Andrew doesn't, can't work any, he's very dedicated, that's one part for. You mean that a lot?
Where, where are you putting him on the sound as well?
Well, I guess, here, I'll just, here, I'll just give you all the survey.
He don't feel any better. I don't, he actually came over, and I thought.
Yes, our next year, he's picking us. This is, yep. So this is.
Worked out, because I have a peer version.
Thirty thousand.
Well, that's just what the media is, I guess, but right now, he's, I guess, mid twenties.
Yeah, because he doesn't have full, right?
He does put in some, quite a bit over time, sorry.
So where, where do you think it should be, like, on the annual sound?
Oh, I guess, I guess I think maybe a little thirty. I mean, I guess I'm asking for a year and a quarter, but I mean, I.
Well, how much do you need, I mean, what, what would you work in the winter, I mean, like?
Well, we keep Pro Shop, the basic, basically, we don't do much with Andrew, but we're, um, Pro Shop's open.
And we will. It's just a matter of how much do you want to transfer and use in fund balance. Whatever you've got short, use your general fund fund balance to make it up.
And we did talk about that, you know, we don't have to spit on, you know, buckets and buckets of cash.
I agree, too much cash.
So I guess I'd like to see if, you know, let's say we adopt the budget as it is. How is that going to affect our cash flow?
We'll take a look at all that. We'll run the new numbers from tonight. We'll take a look at the changes in the golf course. We'll give you some projections.
Let's see what it looks like.
Yep.
And then, so Monday, we're working budgeting.
Yep.
So let's be prepared to make some decisions so we can get the...
Anything else for the good of the cause? We've been here two hours. That's long enough. Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Parsons, second by Hausmann to adjourn the special work session for the budget. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed.
FLSA. That's where you look.
China?
Yep.
Try the minimum?
No, it's not there.
Oh.
But there's...
That's what I wanted.